Start the meeting, they're gonna play us one more tune and I, I heard you.
That was wonderful. Thank you to the Rapid City Stevens String Trio for that wonderful Christmas music. We will begin tonight's meeting for the City Council meeting here on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Bieberdorf.
Present.
Maher.
Here.
Roberts. Strowman.
Here.
Pettigrew.
Present.
Seacrest. Lehman.
Here.
Hamm.
Here.
Evans.
Festively here.
Roseland.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, and I believe Councilman Roberts is on the phone, according to my, just as a heads up. Next up, we will have an invocation from Pastor Greg Blanc, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Blanc?
Good evening. Grateful to be here with you this evening on this, 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 this Christmas week, so Merry Christmas, even better, happy birthday to Jesus, right? Just want to say thank you for your dedication and your, your service and I'm sure that it made it always seem like it, but you are appreciated and respected and prayed for. So, let's start with an invocation tonight. Father, we open this meeting inviting and invoking your presence here. Let your grace and your peace be evident. We're thankful that you love the people of Rapid City and want what's best for all of us. We're pleased for the fact that our state motto says that, under God, the people rule and as a community. We're grateful to the men and women you have allowed to govern us, give them your wisdom, as they bear the privilege and responsibility to lead the people of Rapid City, knowing their decisions impact many, many people. God, we ask that you would bless Mayor Solomon, the City Council members, the police and, and fighter chiefs and other officials here and their families as they serve the citizens of Rapid City. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll, we have the adoption of the agenda. I do believe we have a council member who wants to make a change to the agenda, but I'm waiting for them to chime in. Mr. Roberts, are you on the line? Going once. Mr. Roberts, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes, sir.
Can you?
Mr. Roberts, can you hear us? Doing a test, one, two.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can he, this is.
Yes.
This is the mayor.
I can hear you.
All right, and you, I can hear you.
I know who it is. Okay. Good.
Everybody can hear us.
I have, good. I have two resolutions, one for Phase One of Homestead and one for Phase Two of Homestead that I'd like to add to the agenda. I'd like to add it to item fifty-two A and fifty-two B. These are resolutions so they can get into, possibly get some of the infrastructure money from the state of South Dakota. These were two of the projects that were turned away because of the project we put in that was denied. So if I can have a second, I'd like to put that on the agenda.
We have a motion by Roberts and a second by Strowman. We've got to make sure we have the right chair on the meeting here, Mr. Evans. And in order to adopt the agenda, we need to take a motion on this, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. So it's fifty-two A and fifty-two B resolutions, and this was just handed to me, so I'm looking at. Mr. Roberts, what did you want to call that? One's Homestead, and the other's what?
One of them is, one of them is Phase One of Homestead and the other one is Phase Two.
Okay. Just want to make sure I call that out, Phase One and Phase Two of Homestead. Okay, that motion passed. We will get to that item momentarily. Next, though, we'll have a presentation from the Sustainability Committee. This is their annual report. So, come on up, y'all. And go ahead and introduce yourselves and.
All right. Yes, well, thank you, City Council members and Mayor Solomon, and we also want to give a shout out to Nicole Salway for allowing us to present. And my name's Nicole Urie-Balk, and I'm joined with Dave Holland and some other committee members for support. And we're here to share about our very busy year that we've had, and so we've narrowed it down to a few highlights, even though it could be a million things that we could have presented on. And so we want to just showcase one to a million, our two thousand and twenty-three highlights. So, what we want to do is to go about what is our CSE, what do we do, share our highlights, and then also allow for some questions and answers at the end. Hopefully you can enjoy some, lots of photos to see what we do on a day-to-day basis. But first, we just want to share that what sustainability is to start off with, just to get us all on the same page. And sustainability is all about focusing on the present needs of these three key elements, people, profit, and the planet, and while not compromising future generations' ability to meet their own needs moving forward. And so, why, what, what do we do? What does the Rapid City Sustainability Committee do? We, you can kind of think of us as a hub or like a beehive of sustainable practices, and so we're very busy legitimate worker bees, going out and collecting data and ideas from city staff, community members, and other communities, to then educate through events, social media, and roundtable discussions to create more seeds of sustainability practices. So to carry that analogy a little bit further, these are our very specific worker bees that go about, and our committee members, and we are missing, there's also lots of engaged citizens and other city council members who join our meetings in an unofficial kind of way. But we do, while we have Parros in here, we want to give a big shout out and thank you to him for his dedication and work on, on the committee. And, but we have lots of interest, and there's thirteen applications to try to join the committee that's waiting in the wings, and so if you know of anyone who is interested in participating, they don't have to be a member to come, and, and everyone is welcome to our meetings. So, let's get into it, our, our highlights of the year. So number one, really big one that we're very excited about is the one and only LaSanne Zeller, who is going to be the very first Program Development Manager of Sustainability and Stewardship. And this mouthful position has been about ten years in the making, so we're very, very excited. And her duties will include focusing on those priority areas, and then also focusing on the EPA Climate Pollution Planning Grant. So she's, which we'll talk about in a little bit, but she's very, very excited to work with everyone, so feel free to reach out and contact her anytime. Another highlight of two thousand and twenty-three is giving out sustainability awards, and the Sustainability Committee wants to honor and celebrate people and organizations who do great work around sustainability in Rapid City. And so one award we've given is to Dan Driscoll for his erosion control efforts at Star Village, and then also the Rapid City Garden Club for their many beautification efforts around Rapid City, and also for being a pollinator habitat advocate. So, they're great, great organizations. All right, with that, I'll let Dave take us to a million.
Cool. My name is Dave Holland, and I've been a member of the Sustainability Committee for a couple of years now, and I'm just gonna go over a little bit about what we did this last year to piggyback on what Nicole said. So we had thirteen different events that we participated in this year, and a couple of them were our ideas, but a majority of them were our community reaching out to us, like the Scouts, the different schools within our community, School of Mines, they reached out to us and they said, you know, we're doing this project on sustainability, we'd like more information, we'd like to partner with you. And so that's what a lot of the activities that we get involved with are related to. These are a few pictures of us. The top one on the left is, we did a city exchange visit with Fort Collins, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. You can see a few pictures of some of our members of our committee presenting in schools and also at the Black Hills Home Builders Show. Six hundred and sixty-five miles driven back to Fort Collins to continue with the numbers theme of this presentation. The one thing that I want to point out, we did give a presentation to the council on this whole visit, so some of you may remember that. And a big lesson that we came back with, learning about the sustainability program, is communicating both with our community and with our council, and that communication helps build trust. And so we've tried to come up with some different ideas. We sat down with Mayor Solomon in September, and we hope in two thousand and twenty-four to sit down with each one of the city council members to get to know you a little bit better and to establish lines of communication. So, we had an Earth Day Expo, which we have every year, but this last year we partnered with our sister city in Apolda, Germany. They had a big hand in what we did this year. They had some funding and also a lot of back and forth with them. They did a project in Apolda, we did one here. Both centered on sustainability, that's how they found us, that's how they looked us up. There were over forty organizations that set up booths, and there were lots of speakers and workshops together going on during that event. This year is April twentieth, also at West Dakota Tech, so if anybody's interested, you can contact us and find out more information. We had over two thousand followers on Facebook and Instagram this last year. That's one of the big ways that we get outreach to our community and also get education messages out there. I do want to highlight one thing, we added a new Start Now campaign to our website. So, a lot of times people ask, what is sustainability? And so we wanted to focus it to five areas that we think, and also we met with city leadership in two thousand and twenty-two, thinks are focus areas for us in Rapid City. And we tried to put lots of ideas that are locally relevant in energy, water, waste, landscaping, and food. So check out our website if you're curious on any of those. And one of the last slides I have, just about last slide, is the Million Dollar Planning Grant that we recently received, the city of Rapid City did, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and other harmful air pollution. So, LaSanne, among with other members of city staff, are currently working on this, together with a consultant. And one thing that I want to focus on here is that they're looking at, you know, potential sources of pollution within our community, but also action items, you know, how can we reduce that pollution? And some of those actions, if they create jobs, if they enhance workforce development, that looks better when you get into the next phase of this project, which has not one million dollars, but four point six billion across the country for implementation grants. So that's something that we're going to be involved in, in two thousand and twenty-four. So we are actively working on our plan for two thousand and twenty-four, and so one of those, like I said, is to sit down and communicate with our council members, but also we're going to try to focus on gathering data and information to try to set more specific goals for ourselves in two thousand and twenty-four. So with that, I will stand for questions if you guys have any. Thank you.
Council, have any comments or questions? Councilor Roseland, you have the floor.
I've been involved with this committee for nearly two years now, having no idea what they were doing when I first was approved to be liaison for this committee, but they're probably the hardest working committee that Rapid City has, been working hard for twelve years to get what they got this year as the Sustainability Coordinator, and they should be very proud of the work they've done and all the other work they've done up to this point, not just with getting a Sustainability Coordinator, but all the other input and education they have done over the years. So, I applaud you. Thank you.
Councilor Evans, you have the floor.
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Roseland just said. I've been involved with this committee for four years now, and I'm very proud of them. This, I believe, is the highest functioning committee that we have of citizens in the city. I wish all committees worked this well and got this much done, and I think we can learn a lot and take them as an example of the right way to run a committee. So congratulations to all of you. I'm very proud of what you do. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you all. Next, we'll move to general public comment. This is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any agenda not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. I do have a few general public comment forums. To begin, we'll start with Adrian Epp. And as a reminder, you have three minutes, and you'll have a, should have a countdown timer up on those screens, otherwise I'll, I'll just cut you off.
All right. I'm breaking form just a little bit from what I usually do. I'm gonna read to you from a section of this, of a book called Strong Towns by Chuck Morone, also founder of the organization called Strong Towns. "The tragic reversal comes from the realization that growth once served us, but now we serve growth. The constraint, the constraint of modern America is that we must experience annual growth in our economy. Without growth, we can't service our debts, pay our retirements and pensions, and keep up with the rising costs of healthcare and education. For a long time, the suburban experiment presented an easy solution to this problem. By pouring money into highways and infrastructure, by making it easy for families to buy new homes in distant places, by establishing funding mechanisms for the mass development of commercial real estate, we experienced the longest and most robust economic boom in human history in the decades after World War II. Yet each iteration of new growth creates enormous future liabilities for future, for local communities, a promise that the quickly denuding tax base is unable to meet. Not only did these new areas need police, fire protection, streetlights, libraries, part, and parks, but all those miles of roads, streets, sidewalks, curbs, and pipe, all those pipes, pumps, valves, meters, culverts, and bridges would eventually need to be fixed and replaced. At the local level, we traded our long-term stability for near-term growth. As one example, the city of Lafayette, Louisiana, had five feet of pipe per person in nineteen forty-nine. By two thousand and fifteen, that had grown to fifty feet, an increase of one thousand percent. They had two point four fire hydrants per one thousand people in nineteen forty-nine, but by two thousand and fifteen, they had fifty-one point three. This is a two thousand one hundred forty percent increase. Over that same period, median household income of Lafayette grew just one hundred sixty percent, from an inflation-adjusted twenty-seven thousand seven hundred to forty-five thousand. And this is true for Rapid City, at least in general. We've grown at an unsustainable rate, and we continue to, to go down this route, and we will not be able to pay for our infrastructure. We can't. I mean, you're already, you're, you keep increasing water bills and everything else, we, because it's unsustainable. If any of you want to borrow this book, I'm willing to lend it to you, and my name and phone number is in the front as well.
Thank you. Next, Brian Peck.
Kind of on the same, kind of on the same area. I'm planning on going to Seattle here in the next couple of days and going to look at some biophilic architecture, which is basically architecture that is sustainable, and it's, it's, it's really an interesting concept. They have a building in Seattle that's a seven-story office building that's all solar, all composting toilets, all self-contained, in Seattle with very little, I mean, not the best solar situation. They, they collect over twenty-five percent more energy than what they need. We need to study this sort of thing, and I'm heading over to Seattle to talk to the people there. Also, they have a block project there that's been very successful, building houses for homeless people and using them as ADU units. I'm looking at working with them on how they're doing that. Also, working with sustainable developing as well as affordable housing. You also have to have affordable developing. In order to do affordable developing, you have to relook at what we've been doing and what we are doing. We need to, like he was talking about, pipes, the sustainability of that, and we're looking at building a whole new wastewater treatment plant, I mean, to the tune of millions of dollars. There's other options that we could do that. We're basically spending millions of dollars on cleaning our water, chlorinating our water, and that water's all used to push poop down a pipe out to Rapid Valley. Is that seriously what we need to be doing? There's a girl that went to tech that came up with a process that you can do the wastewater treatment plant in your house. She's got a company in, I'm not sure or familiar with where she's at with that right now, but I know there's another one that's available out of the Netherlands that has a system that recycles all of your waste within your house for about three hundred, about three thousand dollars, and it's the size of a refrigerator. It's incredible stuff that's available, working with GenPro, that's out by Piedmont, with their solar and their water filtration stuff, and Loyal Plumbing, it looks like will be able to accomplish being able to recycle all your water within your house, as well as taking care of the waste within your house. And I'll be presenting that down the road, but we need to be visionaries.
Time's up, Mr. Peck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rob Momarts.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say thank you again to the students from Stevens High School. That was phenomenal. I've got some good news for you city council members. I will be putting a pause to my attendance here with the intentions of hopefully, emphasis on that word, the next time we meet is in more positive means. I would like to congratulate you for achieving the goals of whoever's idea it was that the Hope Center going active as an organization was a good idea. Hopefully, our kids as generations and further treat you fairly. I had a lot more. The sustainability thing kind of threw me for a loop because I've been doing a lot of personal studies on how quickly our city is expanding, and we're on the verge of imploding personally, in my opinion, just on my research. But, back to topic. With the closure of the Hope Center, I have had more opportunity or focus on my faith, and it's led me to some verses that I'd like to share with you. Not necessarily, I understand everybody's beliefs are different, they're just very strong verses as a person. They're mainly Psalms, and they're, I'll just briefly go through them. I'll leave it to you to check them out. Psalm twenty-one, Psalm thirty-one, Psalm seventy, Psalm ninety-one, Psalm one forty-seven, which I had never heard until today, so it has to have some meaning to me, and then ultimately Psalm twenty-three. Again, I won't go in depth and read them all out to you. to you. I would love to, but again, I know everybody doesn't share my beliefs. With that being said, I wish nothing but the best for you, all of you. Happy holidays, and again, hopefully the next time we talk, it's in more positive circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes general public comment. And now we will move on to non-public hearing items, items 1 through 53B, I believe. Yep, items 1 through 53, excuse me. And we will open public comment for items 1 through 47. I do have one speaker request form on that item. That is item 47 from Adrienne Epp, once, once again.
Well, once more, I have to speak out against using 7 percent of the city budget for expanding the Sheridan Lake Road like you've been doing. It's, it's hilarious that we're spending this much money on such a small project. And when a project that is only supposed to improve traffic for very short parts of the day, but the rest of the day, it's going to be, where it's not peak capacity, it's going to be extremely dangerous because people are going to be more prone to speed. They're going to go faster. It doesn't matter that there's a, that the police precinct building there is there now. People don't care. They're going to speed. We cannot continue to make decisions that ignore public safety. They'll, they'll tell you that they're designing a safe road. Oh, well, it's, it's level of service A. It's, it's safe. No, it's not. They're going to throw terminology at you to tell you, oh, well, we've, we've, we're at capacity, we're experiencing level of service F, we're experiencing cycle failure, we're experiencing like 80 seconds of delay on the 15th, busiest 15 minutes of the 30th, 30th most busy day of the year. I'm messing up the terminology, but that's, that's something in their codebooks, and it's ridiculous. If you want good roads, you need to consider all hours of the day. There's a good resource, there are good resources to consult on things like this. Strong Towns is a great organization. Kittelston and Associates, they have a guidebook for designing safe streets that you should definitely use for this and the Safe Streets Grants. They've helped another city with their Safe Streets Grant. We just cannot keep making stupid decisions like this, really stupid decisions. It's, 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 it's part of that, that growth, like, we have to keep growing, 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 but it's unsustainable. Just like what I read before, it's unsustainable. So, that's all I have to say about that.
That will take us to the end of the public comments for non-public hearing items, 1 through 47. And so, we will move to consent items, 1 through 47. Would the council wish to remove any of the items or vote on the remaining balance? Got a motion by Lehman and a second by Roseland to approve items 1 through 47. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That would take us to the end of consent items, and we will begin non-consent items, items 48 through 53, and we will open public comment for items 48 through 53. And I do have a few speaker request forms. First, we will begin with Carla Schonzenbach.
Thank you, council members. Again, my name is Carla Schonzenbach. I had the opportunity to speak to you about the water rate increases at Legal and Finance and Public Works. I sent you that in your email, so I'm sure you will be excited to get that. But moving on for tonight, I wanted to speak a little more generally about the impact of the rate increases. I've often been at these meetings from gavel opening to gavel end. I've watched the city council, and I have to say, at the last session, I felt a little bit like I was watching a hostage video. I felt that you guys were uncomfortable with the amount of information you had and the time, and I think that honestly, that is justified. As I went and started looking at these plans and proposals, I will say that as an engineer, there are always opportunities to relook at things, and I think this is one of the opportunities that we have. It was clear to me that you were uncomfortable with some things, and I think this is justified because, look, this wasn't just the reclamation, it was the water. Everything was rolled together. Multiple projects over multiple years projected way out into the future, for extrapolation, on a rate increase that we were trying to input in now. So, you don't make those rate increases in a vacuum, so I thought it might be an opportunity to look at where we are today in context of our economy. We're currently 34 trillion in debt, and in an inflationary economy, we're wages are not anywhere near keeping up with the cost of goods and services. We have a ballooning state budget. We have housing shortages. Excuse me. HUD has put out their fiscal year 2024 fair market rent documentation for Rapid City. This is pegged to the 40th percentile, and for efficiency apartments, 2023 was 665, and now they're 788. One-bedroom, 756 to 886 per month. Two-bedroom apartments, 995 to 1163. These are rates that are directly going to impact your people who are HUD subsidized and probably the one you're looking at workforce housing that is subsidized on a sliding scale. Excuse me. So, we have this, we don't really just have housing shortages, we have affordable housing shortages, and we're looking at pushing our already high water costs even higher. I believe we have a program in there for people who cannot afford the full water cost. However, the amount they do not pay will be put on the balance of the people paying the, the costs and driving their costs even higher. So, we need to ask a couple of questions. What about the people now who can't afford water? How many live in their homes without this service? How much bad debt does the department write off now? And what happens if those not paying their bills increase substantially? It impacts us all. Please go back and look what I gave you about specific questions in legal and finance and the projects. Can we separate out the sewer and water projects? Do the project assumptions and projections make sense?
Time's up, ma'am.
Yep. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, Taunche Weaver.
Good evening, council and everyone. I've been following the saga of the water ordinance through previous council meetings and, and also the committee hearings. I want to give you a couple of observations. Starting with moving this, this ordinance ahead or not is not a referendum on the virtues or performance of the water department personnel. A vote against it is not personal. No one should frame it that way. Knowledgeable, concerned citizens such as Mr. Green and Mr. Freitag, and I would add Ms. Schonzenbach as well, have provided you and the public with a great deal of information that can't be ignored, including the following. Discovering and mitigating leaks throughout the water district has not been aggressively pursued as it could have been. The city wastes treated water on golf courses and other landscaping. Mr. Freitag is calling for a forensic audit of the water department, or the Water Enterprise Fund, not a general audit, to identify historical practices that amount to misappropriation of funds. The last time a water ordinance was, and you may recall this, but the last time a water ordinance was referred to the ballot, there were questionable disbursements identified then for items that were unrelated to the water utility. Misappropriation of these funds will only be revealed, and the practice stopped with a forensic audit, so I would strongly encourage that as well. Unlike a tax, you cannot raise a fee in anticipation of a yet-to-be-identified project, so it is quite possible, too, that this ordinance is in conflict with state law. A fee is for an offset, a fee always has a benefit that offsets the fee. You're paying for something that you are benefiting from immediately, not 10 years down the road. The estimated average, and I would agree that the estimated average household use of six units, quite a bit of what I've been hearing in the media about this increase, seems questionable to me. There was stated that the average household use is six units, and that seems to me very unrealistic because our two-person household can't seem to get below seven use, seven units in a low-use month. So, I would encourage you not to move forward with this right now. I know you are concerned as individuals about waste. My representative, Mr. Pettigrew, in fact, before he ascended to this dais, I guess you call it still a dais, contacted me after I pointed out that the school district crushes perfectly good school buses in order to get a grant for a new one. So, that is outrageous waste, and I think there's a lot that can be done to mitigate.
Time's up, ma'am.
Situation. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Last speaker is Chris Green.
Good evening. I had questions which need answers based on objective data and analysis. Why is the Rapid City water system currently about 20 to 25 percent less efficient based on costs than the average large municipal water system in South Dakota? There should be economies of scale with having a larger water system. We're in the second largest. This indicates problems with the cost structure, efficiency of process, management, et cetera. Self-plant water reclamation facility, cost of debt is very critical. That one, that particular project has a low cost of debt. The other three projects that are, you know, basically being considered are all high-cost debt projects, so there's a need to be differentiated. I would mention the Water Reclamation Fund needs an audit as well, and as Taunche mentioned, every fee under South Dakota COFI law needs an offsetting benefit. This benefit has to be timely. It can't be many years in the future. So, expenses for debt service, such as a water fund, water reclamation fund, should be a debt surcharge to the applicable fund, which specifically covers the debt principal and interest over the payment of that debt. In most cases, it's 20 years. Should never be applied to base rate, because every, as everyone knows, once base rates are increased, they never decrease. So, also mention that the, you know, there's been some discussion that a lot of the things that this, this whole thing's based on is somehow number of water accounts. This is from a Black Hills Fox article in July 13, 2022. City stated that the what, number of water accounts between 2024 and 2045 is going to go from 25,000, 027 to 68,000, 027, which seems basically mathematically impossible. So, that's a flawed assessment and assumption. So, you know, so why are we using an irrevocable five-year increase on both the water fund and water reclamation fund? Why don't we analyze these things annually? If we have a case such as new projects where the first one's coming online fully constructed in 2028, then you can consider, like I said, the debt surcharge over the life of it. That would make a lot more sense. We don't currently have any water projects even on the books to be constructed. Nothing's been designed. Nothing's probably going to be constructed till 2030. So, why are we assuming a 6.5 percent per year annual inflation rate, yet asking for 10 percent a year? So, 37 percent is the assumed inflation rate versus 61 percent. This creates tremendous demand destruction, which is not accounted for in the water fund. Are only the truly wealthy people on the Rapid City water system going to be allowed to water their landscaping plants and trees, water gardens, water of grass, take daily showers? Are we trying to make Rapid City unlivable for the majority of the population? Perhaps that is not the objective, but it's the inevitable result.
All right. That takes us to the end of the public, excuse me, public comment for non-consent items, 48 through 53. And we will begin with item 48. A second reading of ordinance number 6598, an ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number six for 2023. Looking for a motion. Motion by Maher, second by Bieberdorff to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 49. A first reading of ordinance number 6595, an ordinance amendment to chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code to remove planned development requirements for more than one building in an apartment complex. Got a motion by Lehman and a second by Hamm to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Got you, Roberts. Motion carries. Item 50. First reading of ordinance number 6597, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Bobby Sunby for Julie Heinz for rezoning requests from Low Density Residential District 1 to Mobile Home Residential District for property generally described as being located at 2911 Garden Lane. Got a motion by Roseland and a second by Hamm to approve. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 51. An introduction and first reading of ordinance number 6596, an ordinance to revise the rates charged by the city's water utility by amending sections 13.08.400 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This item was continued from the December 4th council meeting. Council wish to make comment or motion?
I'll move to approve.
Got a motion by Evans and a second by Roseland to approve. Okay. I mean, we'll have to do a roll call on this, according to my attorney, who just whispered in my ear. In case you want to know what he said, because Mr. Roberts is on the phone. All right. Any comments, questions? Otherwise, we'll take it to the floor. All right. All in favor? Say aye. Never mind. I just said roll call vote, and yet I did the general roll call anyways. Not funny. Let's take it to a roll call. Heidi, we'll go to you.
Bieberdorff?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Roberts?
No.
Strowman?
No.
Pettigrew?
Aye.
Lehman?
No.
Hamm?
No.
Evans?
Aye.
Roseland?
Aye.
Five to four passes.
Motion passes five to four. Okay, next, we're going to item 52, a resolution for number 2023-093. A resolution to amend rates to be charged in 2024 through 2028 for water and water reclamation utilities. This item was also continued from the December 4th city council meeting.
I move to approve.
Motion by Roseland and a second by Evans to approve. I suppose we just go them back over to Heidi and have you do that all over again. There you go.
Bieberdorff?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Roberts?
No.
Strowman?
No.
Pettigrew?
Aye.
Lehman?
No.
Hamm?
No.
Evans?
Aye.
Roseland?
Aye.
Same result.
All right. Motion passes five to four. Next, we're going to go to 2A, and Mr. Roberts, if, I'm going to have you explain this and, or make your motion.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Well, do you want to do them both at the same time, or do you want to take them one at a time?
Well, let's take them one at a time. Quite frankly, I don't even know what we're doing. Let's, except that it's for homestead, phase one, phase two. So, for the public's sake, if we could explain it.
These are the same resolutions that we did a few months ago that were denied because of the Sheridan Lake Road project that came in that was denied by the state. The reason they're in front of us is because the developers need these resolutions signed before they can apply for any of that state, you know, grant money for infrastructure, for housing, and that's a reason that Sheridan Lake Road was denied because they didn't say that it, it was for housing. I think one of the big reasons we need to do this as quickly as possible is because we in Rapid got roughly, I think, $8 million of those grants so far, and Sioux Falls has got close to 17 million, and from what I've heard from Sioux Falls, they're going to got close to 17 million, and from what I've heard from Sioux Falls, they're going to just be taking blank, they're going to be taking everybody and signing the resolutions and letting the state decide which project is best. So I would like to see us at least get a little bit more of this money from the state. So I would make a motion to approve this resolution.
Got a motion to approve and a second by Hamm. We're going to go to Finance Director Daniel Ainsley for some guidance here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Jamie with our Grants Division has been on the phone with the state as well as Sioux Falls, and I'd just like to provide some information to the council in regards to that. Sioux Falls is in a, and the city of Rapid City agreed through more of a gentleman's agreement to split the $30 million grant portion that has been set aside for the two cities, and I think that's important to note, that it's been set aside by the legislature for the two municipalities. There's not a guarantee by the legislature that each city gets 15 million, but it's essentially an agreement between the two cities at this point that each city will apply for the 15 million each. And Sioux Falls has said as of today, that's still what they anticipate doing. They still have some of their $15 million in grants that have not been awarded yet by the state, and so they are looking for additional projects as well. Similar to what happened with Rapid City, they have had a developer that has put in a grant request that did not have a resolution of support from the city, and so that is why, if you look on the list of pending applications, there's more than $15 million for the, within the city of Sioux Falls. One of those applications does not have support from the city of Rapid City. When we look at this, the council remembers or recalls, we invited various developers to bring forward all their projects in June and July, I think, of this year. Then the council acted in August on several different projects that received the resolutions of, of support from the city. Of that, there were two projects that were city projects. One was awarded, one was not. There also were some private projects that received resolutions of support. Some of those private developments still have not put in their application yet to the state. There's some that are still pending in front of the state, and there also have been some that were not, did not receive the funding from the state as well. And so, so there is money that's still available, Rapid City's $15 million. What Jamie has done is reached out to all the developers, because there are several developers that have already contacted Jamie saying that they wanted to proceed the resolution of support. She has reached out to all of them and has requested that they turn in their revised applications to the city next week so that we can bring forward the city council in January. These are on some first basis in front of the state, however, $30 million have been set aside specifically. So it's not that.
Can you, can you go on to Mr. Landin's microphone, and I'll chime in? Yours is cutting out, I want to make sure you get your heard.
And I believe Jamie is here as well, somewhere in the back. If there's more detailed information, I know Jamie has been working on this significantly over the past week. I just want to let the council know that the state just met on Tuesday, I believe, and so this has been an expedited process to try to ensure that there's fairness for everyone with the news that we received on Tuesday.
And Mr. Landin, since you already have the microphone, I see you're in the queue before we get to the council members.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say something about adding the item to the agenda. I know your, your rules allow you to add items to the agenda, but I think, you know, in the past, I've discouraged you taking action on substantive items at the meeting if it hasn't been noticed publicly. I think there's some open meetings potentially issues. There are other developers that have projects that are seeking resolutions of support. There's a process in place for doing that. These would be outside that process. It hasn't been noticed that nobody from the public has the opportunity to speak on these resolutions. I would hazard a guess that most of you don't even really know what you're voting on at this point, what projects, and so I would just ask you to be cautious about adding a substantive item to the agenda and taking action on it that night that hasn't been noticed, and nobody has really had an opportunity to vet it, or no opportunity for people from the public to come speak on it, because there are other developers who, at the very least, even if, if they're not happy with what action you take tonight, I think there's no point for them going through any vetting process after your action tonight. I'm assuming they will all just want to be on your next agenda to get their resolutions approved without any vetting, so if you take action tonight. So I would just, again, urge you to be cautious about adding an item like this and taking action on it tonight.
Thank you. Just, just for the clarity sake of the public, what, what was provided right before the meeting were some papers. It says a resolution in supportive, just for the record, DTH LLC's South Dakota Housing Infrastructure Application, so it's a resolution, resolution of support for that, for those items, in case folks were confused what we're talking about. Okay, next we go to Mr.
Do I have any time left?
Yeah, I'll give you some time, and let's go to the other council members, John, and then I'll come back to you, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Pettigrew, you have the floor.
Thank you, Joel, for your comments. That was going to be my request, to have a substitute motion to move this to our January meeting. I just feel the last minute here to have this thrown at us, I know nothing about it, I got to get smart about it, and I don't think it's fair to the rest of the council to make a decision on something that was thrown at us at this meeting. So I would offer a substitute motion to move this to our first meeting in January. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Pettigrew and a second by Evans to continue the item to the first meeting in January. All right, next, Mr. Maher.
I agree with, we need to know what the options are and what the other projects may be, so I would agree that we should delay till January.
Okay, Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Boozma, did you want to speak on this item? I'll give you my five minutes.
Thank you, Lance.
Dane Boozma, I work with the developer. I also work with the consultant that brought these resolutions forward. These resolutions simply say that the city of Rapid City will accept the infrastructure once it's done to city code and ordinance. This resolution does not establish the competitive nature of these, that's all handled at the state level. I think the fact that the city already went through one selective process on the grant applications, their own project for $5.8 million was denied, I think they've proven their inability to pick and choose what projects should be taken for or not. I feel like time is of the essence. I challenge you to, fact, Mr. Ainsley, Sioux Falls had been approved for 16.8, 16.9. We've got the resolution, which was the additional $2 million from Sioux Falls. South Dakota Housing actually provided it to our consultant because we wanted to verify that they were approved, and so Sioux Falls has assumed beyond the gentleman's agreement Mr. Ainsley references. So time is of the essence, it's competitive, it's first come, first served. There's approximately $7 or $8 million left. Sioux Falls is going to be acting on this. They already have, and they're going to continue. So let's keep some money in Rapid City and keep this moving forward. Again, we're not asking you to approve the project, we're simply saying that you guys will accept the infrastructure when it's installed to city standard. So appreciate your time, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Next, we're going to Counselor Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to appreciate that Mr. Roberts brought this forward in a timely manner, because I do believe that it is important that we move on this quickly. And may I ask Mr. Boozma another question, please?
Absolutely.
Mr. Boozma, on the first round, when we were talking about this, did not you submit these same projects at that time?
We did, and we respected that the city wanted to do their own selective process, and that was their choice, and we let it die. The fact, when we tracked this very closely, because obviously this is important to the city, that's when we brought this back forward again, saying, hey, this is important.
Well, I, I believe, I recall that this was an affordable housing project that you were proposing on the first round when you got basically bumped by the Sheridan Lake Road project. Is that accurate?
The project that we presented was less dollars per unit of the grant, so less dollars amount of money, more units. We had the less dollars per unit than any other project that was submitted, time of their select.
So how many units are we talking about in Homestead One and Homestead Two?
Oh, there's, I, I'm going to, don't quote me, but it's 500 and some, I believe it's 150, and then 300 and some units between the two. And again, our dollars per unit were pretty reasonable, being the less dollars per unit than any other project presented that we saw.
So in essence, I guess my point to the council is that this is not something that just got sprung on us. This was something that was submitted the first round, and it got bumped, and I'm prepared to move forward tonight with approving these resolutions. So thank you, Mr. Boozma.
Thank you.
Next, go to Counselor Hamm. Will you chime back in, Mr. Hamm? I may have bumped you on accident. Again, my apologies.
No worries. All right, so I have a couple of questions, I was, I actually was on the queue a little bit ago. So how much have we gotten so far out of our allotted gentleman's agreements of 15 million? In my understanding, it's about 3.3%?
Is that a question for the Finance Director or for Jamie?
Is that for Jamie?
Maybe, maybe for Jamie?
I don't know who can best answer my question.
Jamie Tennis is our Grants Manager.
Hello. All right, so if you recall, 15 million was our pot of money. We had seeked requests from developers who were interested. We had over $20 million in requests that came through. We then narrowed that down to $15 million for this first round, notifying the developers that if they, if grants weren't awarded, that there would be additional funding in the pot. Thus far, a total of 5.6 million has been approved, because again, the city had a project, but there were also additional projects. There is another 3.4 million in grants that are pending, and 4.2 million in loans that are pending, and then 5.8 million that was denied, and then another 2.5 million of applications that were submitted that didn't have the resolution, and therefore were bumped out of the process. By the state.
Okay, so if, if we approve the two that are on, on the queue here, there's still money left in the coffer. Is it, is it possible that we could approve? Because these resolutions are per city standards, it doesn't, it doesn't contradict city standards by any, any fashion. Is it possible we could approve anybody who comes forward and just expedite the process? Is that possible, that we could make that motion?
That is something that you all can decide. As the attorney pointed out, there are other developers who were also not chosen in that first round, who are now aware of the additional funding and have been given until Thursday to submit their projects. And then we were going to go through the same process, where we team an ad hoc committee of light leaders within the city, vetted those projects, looking at multiple items, including the impact on affordable housing, the impact on our infrastructure, the maintenance that's going to be required from the city, and other variables. So it was more than just dollars per unit. So if you do that, as he said, it's going to send a message to those other developers who had already reached out to staff and have already even submitted some of them, the projects. So it's, it's circumventing that for those that went through the proper process.
So the gentlemen that are here today, they went through that process as well?
Yes.
Already once? Okay.
But so did others.
Right, right. Okay. So they would, they would have till Thursday of next week?
This week.
Of this?
The, the timeline that we put together, last Tuesday was the board meeting. By the end of the week, we had determined a new round of processes. We'd emailed all of the developers that we knew were interested. We'd also sent information out to Public Works and Plan and Community Development to send it to anybody they've heard from, as well as Elevate, to get the word out to anybody who might be interested in this. We were going to review those, the, starting next week, for the next two weeks, allowing a two-week process internally to vet those. Because of the timing of putting those resolutions forth to legal and finance then, it would go to legal and finance on January 10th and to council on January 15th. That, again, seemed like the most expedited process, that's still a fair and equitable process for those involved.
Okay, is there any way that we can guarantee that if we delayed till January 15th, that we wouldn't get bumped by Sioux Falls, folks who would submit theirs ahead of time?
Again, talked to Sioux Falls just today, and they had said that they are going with that same, or the same gentleman's agreement, if you will. The way that the state is doing it is they've got a running list, and as applications come in, they're added to that list, and then they review a bulk of them at a time. And so whatever applications go in would go at the bottom of that list, and then they're reviewed, the next review would be in January, and then in February. There's already a group of them that are being reviewed for January, so I have a feeling anything put on at this point is probably not going to be reviewed until February.
And is that a first-come-first-served list?
Yes. Assuming they're awarded.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Next, Mr. Evans.
Don't leave, Jamie. So, boy, my initial reaction is, work fast, move, move quickly, and then after the speech by the lawyer, the financial expert, the banker, and the successful businessman, I'm thinking maybe we should hold off. But if we hold off, there is a chance the money might all be spent, and we lose everything then. It's a chance.
There's a chance.
Okay, well, you know, and we've been yelled at by people all night, not yelling, preached at, about unfair processes, behind-the-scenes this and all this. I want to be as fair as possible, but I also don't want to lose money. We have spent too much time in this city, missing out on grants because nobody's asked for them over the last 40 years. And having you on board, you've more than paid for your salary a zillion times over already, so thank you. But even though I seconded the proposal, I don't want to lose the money, so I might not even vote for something I seconded, so hearing, after hearing the discussion, thank you.
Mr. Roberts? Give you your opportunity to come back in.
Thank you, I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to just kind of touch on this, being fair and equitable, because these two projects were vetted at the beginning. They were two of the projects that weren't okayed because of the Sheridan Lake Road project. There were four other projects that came through at that time. Two of them possibly could have went through, two of them, I understand, didn't go through because they were missing some information. But saying that this is fair and equitable, that you gave somebody an extra six months to come up with an application, that these people spent all their time getting it in on time, I think is ridiculous. We have done many resolutions since I've been on the city council that we have walked on, so Joel, I think, is just kind of trying to cover his butt, because everybody knows a resolution really has no teeth to it. So the reason this is being done is some goofy reason the state had it. I don't know why they had that. I mean, if, if they're going to give the city money to build infrastructure, the city's going to eventually take it over. So I hope that you can see past this. I don't want to miss an opportunity. I think that the other two projects that went through the application the first time should come in tomorrow, and we should do a special council meeting, and we should okay those two projects. But, and I'm sure it would all stay within the $5.8 million that we've lost because of Sheridan Lake Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Mr. Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on what Mr. Roberts just said. You know, we do have a council meeting, I believe, on the 26th, the special council meeting, for those other projects, if they want to get their application in, I think they should do that, and perhaps we could deal with it at that time. Um, I think they should do that and perhaps we could deal with it at that time. But these Homestead one and two, um, these have already been submitted, um, they've already been vetted. They're outstanding projects, um, for, as Mr. Boomsma said, somewhere between a hundred and fifty in one phase and three hundred units in another phase. And, um, I just, I don't want to, you know, he hesitates his loss. I don't want to wait on this resolution, on these projects, but I would welcome anyone else that wants to come in and apply for something and, and have it heard at the, uh, December twenty-sixth special council meeting. But I don't think that we should delay this. I think that we risk, um, losing money that we should have for these types of projects. So, I'm going to vote against an extension because I want approval of these resolutions tonight. I yield.
Okay, so right now we have a substitute motion, uh, to move this to the first meeting in, first city council meeting in January. And we need to go to a roll call vote.
And this is to continue, correct?
This is the, this is the continuance one.
Roseland? Evans? Hamm? Lehman? Pettigrew? Strowman?
No.
Roberts?
No.
Maher?
No.
Bieberdorff?
Okay, now we're going to go to the original motion, which was to approve items fifty-two A and fifty-two B. I do have a question for the city attorney before we get in here. Joel, do I need to read the proposed language in here? Since we haven't noticed it?
Well, I, I certainly don't think it would hurt since I don't know whether any of the council have actually seen the resolution, so.
Okay, okay. Mr. Evans?
I guess my, my question is that since we're going to, um, open it up to vote on all of them on the twenty-sixth, perhaps we should do this well and it gives no image of impropriety out there to the public? And we can do them all at once and we're still in under the deadline, would that be?
Is that a substitute motion?
I would say that, yes. I make that motion and then we do it all at once.
All right, so we have a substitute motion to continue this to the special city council meeting on December twenty-sixth. And a second by Pettigrew. Is that correct? I want to confirm the twenty-sixth is our special council meeting, year-end council meeting? Okay. All right, Mr. Hamm, you have the floor now.
Given, uh, probably a number of people can answer this question, but given the information we've given out to the, the folks who already had done the applications, sounds like there's four others that have already come through, um, that's, I, I support that, that motion and if they had already put their information out there six months ago, it won't be hard for them to reapply by the twenty-sixth. So, I think that's, I support that motion.
Okay. All right, let me, let me read this, just to, I just feel weird that the public doesn't know what we're talking about. "A resolution in support of DTH LLC's South Dakota Housing Infrastructure Application. Whereas DTH LLC wishes to apply for Housing Infrastructure Funding Program assistance from the South Dakota Housing Development Authority. And whereas DTH LLC has submitted preliminary plans for the public infrastructure for the Homestead Vista Phase One Housing Development to be located in the city of Rapid City. And whereas the submitted plans have been determined to satisfy the requirements of the city of Rapid City, whereas the city of Rapid City has the capacity to support the proposed public infrastructure projects and has adequate water supply, water treatment facilities and wastewater treatment facilities available for the housing to be supported by this public infrastructure project. And whereas the proposed public infrastructure will be maintained by the city of Rapid City on an ongoing and long-term basis. Now therefore, it is resolved by the city of Rapid City by way of this resolution. Hereby approves the proposed housing infrastructure project and acknowledges and agrees to the provisions set forth in the resolution." That is for fifty-two A. I'm going to read the other one. This will make you fall asleep, I know, but that's all right. "A resolution in support of DTH LLC's South Dakota Housing Infrastructure Application. Whereas DTH LLC wishes to apply for the Housing Infrastructure Funding Program assistance from the South Dakota Housing Development Authority. And whereas DTH LLC has submitted preliminary plans for the public infrastructure for the Homestead Vista Phase Two Housing Development to be located in the city of Rapid City. And whereas the submitted plans have been determined to satisfy the requirements of the city of Rapid City. Whereas the city of Rapid City has the capacity to support the proposed public infrastructure project and has adequate water supply, water treatment facilities and wastewater treatment facilities available for the housing to be supported by the public, by this public infrastructure project. And whereas the proposed public infrastructure will be maintained by the city of Rapid City on an ongoing and long-term basis. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Rapid City by way of this resolution. Hereby approves the proposed housing infrastructure project and acknowledges and agrees to the provisions set forth in this resolution." So, those are the, the two items that we're voting on and I currently have a motion to continue it to December twenty-sixth, but we're going to go to Mr. Strowman before we vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion, um, that we approve these two for resolution tonight, the Homestead one and Homestead two, and that anyone else that wants to make an application for a resolution in their support, that they submit those for, um, determination at the December twenty-sixth meeting.
Second.
Okay, my motion by Strowman, second by Hamm, to approve those two items and also use the special city council meeting on December twenty-sixth for the remaining items. Whew, anybody else want to chime in on this?
Funny way of doing business that you substitute motions for other motions. I don't, is that really the way Robert's rules work?
Well, I think when we took it off the table, then it got to go, go back on.
I mean, I don't really care. I want it to pass, but.
Well, let's take the one on top of the, on top of the stack here. That's Mr. Strowman's substitute motion. And that is to approve tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, motion, well, we gotta, we gotta do a roll call. Forgot we had a phone call come in, so.
Somebody's going to be unhappy.
All right, Heidi, you should be in.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Yes.
Um, so our meeting is at noon, the special meeting, and then Public Works is at twelve thirty. So, is it going to be enough time for the other people? I'm just wondering if twelve o'clock is the time or if we should do earlier? If that comes to it, I guess. Okay. Um, Bieberdorff?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Aye.
Strowman?
Aye.
Pettigrew?
No.
Lehman?
Aye.
Hamm?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Roseland?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to one.
Okay. Thank you all. Now we'll take us to item fifty-three. Public Works, we got a request item, Public Works, request from Mark Millar to dispute utility billing service charge.
How you doing?
Mr. Millar?
If I don't get the answer I like the first time, can we do it two or three times? Thank you. I've been here, this is my fourth trip over a fifty-dollar bogus bill you're giving me. I'm concerned about my credit rating and the city's predatory billing. And I've already told you my story enough times. I guess this is finally your chance to act because I don't know how the whole process works and I wasted a lot of extra trips. If you don't, uh, drop my bill, the fifty-dollar reconnect fee, I've already stated that I'll just go to court and, and I, I think it's probably an answer that a judge needs to answer anyways. But, uh, in support of, uh, the question that was brought up by Mr. Freitag the other day and, and the que, the concern that fifty percent of the Water Department's enterprise fund is going to support the legal fund, uh, that, that seems like a lot. And so I think I'll have to stand in, in support of Mr. Freitag's suggestion that we have a, a forensic audit of what really does take place in the Water Department. And at the end of, if, if you don't, in fact, relieve me of this predatory bill that I have, and I do in fact have to take this to small claims court to preserve my credit rating, I'm going to come back and ask you guys to present to me how much time the legal department wasted fighting for a fifty-dollar bogus predatory bill, just to show you guys where you spend your money. So then beyond that, now that's enough, you can decide on that. I haven't, I have a further concern. I, I just now, tonight, found out that the people who were strong-armed carjacked at Red Lobster last week were people that I know. And, uh, I understand that the gentleman of the couple sustained sixty-two staples to his head from the juveniles that attacked them. I also, in the story, heard that those juveniles were involved in a, a further attempt earlier or apparently. And, and I just, I, I hate to come down here and seem like Mr. Gloom all the time, but I had quite a little bit of studying on military practices in college. And one of the first concerns of deploying a battle-ready force is how they feel about their situation at home. By the time we get that B-21 here as an active military platform, considering the rate of crime in this city and our inability to service it, the military won't want to be anywhere within a hundred miles of the city. So, I, I think you need to reconvene your, uh, Ellsworth people that consulted you out there and see if anybody there, uh, would affirm the fact that, uh, the, the primary objective of any battle-ready force is how they are at home.
Mr. Millar?
My time, I changed my subject. I'm sorry.
Yep.
You guys are going to vote on my water bill one way or another?
Yes, that's what we're here for. Okay.
There you go, vote on it. Oh, wait, do I get, I get my chance to rephrase it, right? Two or three times and?
Yeah, hi, that's a good one.
So, are we taking action on my water bill at this time?
We're gonna, we're about to, but I'm going to have to ask you to sit down now.
Okay, I'm, I'm not familiar with the process.
They'll call you up if they, if they have any questions, they'll call you up here. All right, council, uh, so we have a decision to make on this. Do you wish to make any comments, a motion, or ask any questions? Mr. Evans?
Oh, I've been talking too much tonight, but I do have a bit of anecdotal info. I'm a person that started a checking account at age like twelve, never bounced a check with the same account my whole life. My credit rating has been eight fifty. I've never missed a payment on any car, house, ranch, loan, anything. And then, um, Mr. Gilbert knows, five years ago, even before I was on the council, I was concerned about the way that the billing service works for the, um, water and how of all the things I pay, the only one that never seems to get paid on time is the water because something always happened. Well, we changed the water billing, the utility billing, um, way it worked this summer. And again, there was problems going through and I thought it was paid up and then it wasn't paid up. And then I thought it was paid up and I've worked on this like five or six times over the last two and a half months. And I thought on the seventh of December, my account was current. But as it turns out, when I just signed in to check it, like I do all my accounts and all my stock funds and everything once a week, sure enough, there was another bill that hadn't been paid. So, I have a little sympathy for Mr. Millar, um, because it happened to me. And lo and behold, my credit rating of eight fifty because of this dropped by seventeen points and I called to ask why. So, and I don't know if that's what it was or not, but that's what they said. So, I'm going to be sympathetic and I'm going to offer, uh, a motion that we do a favor and I don't know if this was from this, because of Mr. Millar and the billing process or what, that we waive his fifty-dollar re-hookup fee and end this nonsense and airing our dirty linen in public over this little miniscule charge. I think it's embarrassing that the city's involved and it has to be done publicly. I don't agree with his tactics, I don't agree with the city's tactics, but I think this is a time to be a bit magnanimous and just say, it's fifty bucks, let's just call it good. I think it's, so I'm going to offer the motion that we waive this fee.
All right, that motion's not accepted. As a reminder to the council, make your motion and then make your comments. So, if anybody else wants to make that motion, you're free to second it.
And now we follow the rule.
Well, yeah, I did, I was flexible with Mr. Millar, but you know better. Mr. Strowman, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I'm, I'll move, uh, to
And I'll second.
To grant the
Motion to waive the fifty dollars?
Move to waive the fifty dollars.
And a second by Evans. And now we're going to go to Counselor Pettigrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give Mr. Millar this, you've got a lot of tenacity. I mean, holy cow, how many times you've been down here, Public Works? I don't know where you live, Mr. Millar, none of my business, but if you just keep track of your mileage, you've probably spent more than fifty dollars in gas. I mean, that's just a pretty easy math problem. I, I guess, I cannot vote to support this. From what I understand, from what I've read, Mr. Millar was very rude to our city staff. Not nice at all. And that's unacceptable. People who work at that city finance desk are just like all of us. They come to work every day, they got bills, they have things going on in their lives, they want to enjoy their job. And in today's environment, folks, if you get people to show up, you better be happy. And we don't need citizens of Rapid City coming into city hall and abusing our staff. And at least Mr. Millard could, I, I'm not going to invite you to come to city hall and apologize. Least you could do, Mr. Millard
Millar.
Millar is write the city staff an apology email or a letter. Make them know that they were appreciated and apologize to them. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Counselor Hamm.
So, is it my understanding that Mr. Millar had a reconnect fee that we have evidence that he didn't actually lose connection and then we charged him a fee for it? Can someone answer that question for me?
Okay, we'll go to Public Works. They're going to give him a moment to get over to the podium.
I, I just want to make sure I understand what's going on for sure.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so this has, this issue has been ongoing. We do, I do want to say we do work very hard with our residents. This one has presented a bit of a challenge for us. So, we have come forward and you have that information in front of you and it's, it's on the agenda. The difficulty with Mr. Millar's curb stop was, or curb, curb, curb valve, um, our technicians were unable to turn it and shut it off. That's not uncommon, that happens all the time. Regardless, he is still charged at fifty dollars because of the late fees that he had incurred. The other option there is he still is responsible, as all of our residents and homeowners are responsible for the, um, service of that curb stop. So, he is responsible for that. Um, we are unable to turn it. It is his responsibility that we have access, as it is for all of our residents. Um, the next option available is that we at some point, um, may have to go in there and dig it up. And that will be at his cost as well.
That's the property of the homeowner?
Yes, and that is in our ordinance, yes.
Just make sure, thank you.
Okay, I see no one else in the queue. So, we have a, we have a motion by Strowman and a second by Evans to waive the fifty dollars for Mr. Millar. Let's go to a roll call, please.
Bieberdorff? Maher? Roberts?
Aye.
Strowman?
Aye.
Pettigrew?
No.
Lehman?
No.
Hamm?
No.
Evans?
Aye.
Roseland?
No.
Motion fails six to three.
Thank you. That will take us to the, uh, beginning of public hearing items fifty-four through fifty-five and we will, uh, open and close public comment for items fifty-four through fifty-five. I do not have any speaker request forms. So, that would take us to consent public hearing items fifty-four through fifty-five. Would the council wish to approve all items or remove any for consideration?
Move to approve.
Yeah. Hamm, I got a motion by Hamm, second by Lehman to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. If I could have a motion to move to executive session. Motion by Lehman, second by Strowman. Motion by Lehman, second by Stroman, we're in executive session. Counsel, that'll be up on the northwest room upstairs.
Do we have a motion to come out of executive session? Motion by Ham, second by Maher. All in favor? We're out of executive session. Next we'll go to the bill list. For that we'll go to Finance Director Daniel Ainsley.
Thank you very much Mr. Mayor. The total bills for tonight are $10,114,642.50.
Motion by Lehman, second by Ham. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. We have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Lehman, second by Strowman. Any... we're adjourned.